Board Executive Committee to Order. The committee would like to welcome the audience. Viewers may watch live board committee meetings online at TCaps.net/Board. And recorded meetings may be viewed on demand at the same address. There is no public comment. And we are at the draft minutes portion of the agenda. Are there any changes to the draft meeting minutes?
No.
Okay, there are no changes. Maintenance posted. Moving on to agenda review. Define document.
Okay, so we have our call to order, our pledge, our reapproval of agenda. Recognition, we're working on something. It's not been announced officially yet, so just need you to give me a little leeway on that for one individual employee recognition that we hope to do. And we'll have our first public comment. Superintendent's report, we will have the legislative update. And again, just coming back from Lansing, tough budget. You know, definitely not everything we wanted, but there are some wins to take from it that I'll make sure to update the board on, especially once we have all the exact details. We're going to be able to share. Then some district highlights as we finished up the year. And then any tenure that we have, tenure contracts that we have for new tenure teachers. We have our committee reports for curriculum and executive. We did not have finance this month, although we did have one thing pop up with some additional textbooks that were needed, hardcovers beyond the 10% contingency because we had more students than we planned, and the teachers really pushed wanting a hardcover book. So the curriculum committee did put that forward as a discussion item. But that would probably normally have been a finance thing, but again, without finance, we put it through curriculum. We'll have the board office hour report. We have our consent agenda with the personal recommendations, annual memberships with MASB as well as MHSAA. We do have that AP World History purchases I discussed, two field trips for TCY, TC West High School First Robotics this summer. And then also getting in on the books now, Traverse City Central High School Art and Archaeological Trip to Italy on June 12th through June 22nd of 2025. And then our meeting minutes. And so those things were all put forward to the board through committee. We'll have our first public hearing for our sex education curriculum. Not a big change at all this year. And really, the biggest thing is just one little questionnaire, just that literally says, "Do you have questions?" You know, for them.
Learn in the U.
Yeah, yeah. Very, very minute real change from that standpoint, but we do have to have that public hearing by law. And so we will have that. And then a reminder that we have to do that two months in a row. So we will actually have that in next month. So it'll be in August at that point is when we would go for approval on that item. And then we'll have discussion of school safety update, talk more on the birth of OS property. We'll say at this point, I have not received anything from the community neighbor group, but they still have some time. As soon as I, if I do get that, I'll forward it to the board. We are going to discuss the 18 credit diploma for TC High School. We had a good presentation on that to the curriculum committee. And we'll have that again for the full board, again, as a discussion item. Second public comment, we have board president's closing remarks and adjournment. So just want to make sure, didn't we talk about, I may have misspoke, I think I talked about maybe the books being a discussion item, but they're not. We put them on consent, correct? The purchase of the books.
Okay, I was there, I moved it, and I can't remember.
I'm pretty sure we said we were okay because it had already been approved.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right.
It was on, it was just a consent item.
I think you're right.
Which is, which is where it is. I just want to make sure. A minute ago, I said it was a discussion item, but it's actually a consent item.
Okay.
Okay. And then adjournment, so that's it.
Question for you on the June 8th agenda, and I sent out an email, I'm sure you didn't get it, but just wondering if we could give.
Oh, yeah, I did get it.
A health and wellbeing update? And I think without a finance, it might fit good and putting it into a, just because I think so much good work has happened and.
Yeah, I'm totally good with that.
Yeah, do you want to put it in a discussion item or do you want to put it in the?
I think you could do it right there under that because it really is a committee that goes out of the district.
Yeah.
So if you want, you can just add it there and Erica can do an update on it, just as we would.
Yeah, that actually makes sense.
Yeah, because you know, we're, yeah, I just think it deserves.
You know, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it up because, you know, it's one of those things that I was hoping if the budget turned out well, that we may be able to do something. But right now, Lunch Buddies, all that, there's nothing, we have nobody to run all that. And as of right now, that would be discontinued unless we can find a vendor or somebody that can step up to, or I'm sorry, a donor that could step up to do some kind of donation for staffing because we will not be able to support that position at all.
Oh, nice position.
We did learn, I think Rotary is still continuing to explore some options.
That's good.
Yeah, I think how we wouldn't know until September.
Well, to the point, I think it's a good thing to do the presentation, let everybody know what's out there and get, and try and get the information out there, the great work, but we just could use some help.
Yeah.
Was continue to support it, I think is a really good point.
Yeah, okay, good, good, good. Thank you. I think that's a good.
That's all I.
Sure, 22nd.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, thank you. So we do have our study session as well to talk about, we'll have our call to order, our pledge, our review of agenda, public comment, consent, and then study session. So these are our middle school principals. Dan will not be here, but one of his assistants will be with Kristen Studeman. And so a very similar format to what we had done with the elementary principals. One little difference, and I know that they're talking right now, is they do want to talk a little bit more about role of instructional coach and some of that, you know, work that is done with, especially with instructional walkers. I think that's something they just want the board really to understand of how that leads to them looking at data and instructional improvement. So they're going to talk a little bit more in depth of what instructional rounds look like with the board. So just to kind of prepare you, I know that that'll, that'll be a little, something a little different this time than we saw last time, but they will have all their data sets, their NWA, their PSAT will make sure for both middle schools that the board has the chance to see all that and. All right, second public comment, and then board president's closing remarks and adjournment.
I think generally the format from the last meeting for the high schools was well received. I said largely.
The elementaries.
The previous, sorry, yes.
The elementaries, yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
I think you're admitting, you're thinking the high schools, and we have the phones.
Probably. I was thinking the right people in my head.
You were, I know what you were, I knew what you were thinking.
We've got a new dad sleep deprived.
Right, exactly.
Sleep deprived.
We're lucky getting to this meeting, to be honest. But no, that, I think that, you know, all the feedback I had from the board was, you know, well received. And so, like I said, keeping it quite a bit similar, but there is that unique, you know, kind of difference. And I think it will be, will be good because instructional rounds is something, you might remember when, when I went around to staff early on, that was one of the things from the past that they said, "We just kind of abandoned it," and it was something we did. And so it really started to gain some real momentum again last year. And so we, we think it'll be the next, next further step of implementation. And so they want the board to be able to see and understand what that is.
Okay, any other questions on agenda reviews? Moving on to informational items, define Connie Taylor.
Thank you very much. Obviously, summer is a very busy time in the human resources office, and we're making some great progress on the vacancies that we had as a result of some of our retirements. So far, really pleased with our candidate pools, interviews are underway, we're starting to extend offers. So that's not always a fun thing, but still sitting out there on some vacancies that we've got a couple third shift custodial maintenance positions. And just a reminder too, we're continuing to do for our critical shortage areas and others like custodial maintenance, the referral bonus and the sign-on bonus. So we rolled those over to continue our recruitment efforts for individuals. So any staff members who refer someone who is hired and completes their probationary period would be entitled to the referral bonus as well as the assignment bonus for the staff member themselves. We closed the posting for the chief academic officer a week ago tomorrow. And so we have an interview scheduled for the month of July. Again, some solid candidates for that position as well, and hoping to be able to make a recommendation to the board by our next board meeting with the decision to be made.
And to be clear, the August board meeting.
Correct. Yeah, sorry, I'm the next, my mind's already.
I know, I know.
Yeah, sorry. And I had sleep last night. We do also have a marketing specialist position available in Ginger's department as a result of a retirement, so that is currently posted. Another area that we continue to look at too are some long-term guest teachers. So for individuals who don't necessarily want that full year commitment, but we always have leaves of absence for medical seizures, babies, adoptions, those sorts of things. So there are several of those posted out there now as well. So again, we're continuing to move through the hiring process and look forward to bringing those candidates to the board through the consent agenda. I will share with you though, based on what Dr. Van Wagner's already shared, that we're continuing to closely monitor numbers in our buildings. So we're taking a conservative approach as to that determination on when to add staff and pull that trigger, just simply because of the uncertainties with the budget and knowing that we certainly don't want to be overstaffed to the point that we would have to engage in layoffs. So what we'll monitor as we always do, and hopefully not making Labor Day weekend decisions, but sometimes that happens. So that's why we have some elementary postings and just general core area postings out there so we have a candidate pool. We're using a new process called Spark Hire, which is videos that we send out to everyone that they answer questions. So we're able to do a preliminary screener without asking people to come all the way into Traverse City if they're from out of state, or even, you know, take time away from a work day to come and meet with us. We also have our next round of open interviews here that they are right after the fourth break, and they're here at the administration building on July 11th, and those are the morning interviews. So come on in, meet with us, discuss some of our vacancies if you're interested in positions with TCaps. We also, just touching on policy, not a lot of updates, finishing up some preliminary meetings with some board members with some questions. I think we have one section to go with a couple of folks who have asked to meet. And as we do, we go through, we're making the non-substantive changes, you know, just, you know, some typos that are corrected, changes of maybe some additional wording. But anything substantive, you guys will be provided a list of the recommendations from those particular board meetings or board members to determine whether or not you want to make their recommended changes or adopt the policy as recommended by TRU. So those we will have to you also by the end of July for your review. And as Dr. Van Wagner mentioned, we will have one individual for, up for tenure. Jennifer Lane has completed the requirements for tenure in the state of Michigan. We'll be acknowledging her. And that's all I have.
And we'll get those policy update recommendations from board members prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Not at the meet, okay.
Prior to.
We'll be able to review.
Correct.
Recommended, the proposed, and so, okay.
You have the TRU, and what I will do is just say in section 1000, here were some suggestions from the trustees that I met with. And you guys can determine whether or not you want to move forward with those suggested changes or continue with the ones as provided to you earlier.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
And then I think we said, right, we're going to get that, but then we're going to see, we're not necessarily going to tackle everything in that first meeting. That was like, that's what we said, right, we were going to go through.
At the August meeting.
At the August meeting.
And I think we said then we'd hoped in September to be able to have that full.
So we can go through, and if there's any that, non-controversial, we can just agree to, then we do. And then if there's anything there, then we can either discuss and then probably kick anything to a later meeting. So it's not going to be.
Yeah, the policies, I believe, will go on as a discussion item in August.
Okay.
So, yeah, so my kind of thought process is to say, okay, if we can all agree on it, great, we'll cross it off the list. If we can't, it gets kicked.
And I also just want to make a note that the, this building is closed next week. And so any individuals who need to talk to someone in human resources just can need to email or make an appointment. Hopefully, there won't be any HR emergencies.
Hopefully not.
Knock on wood.
Yeah, be careful.
All right. Any other questions on HR? Then moving on to communications update, define Ginger Smith.
Thank you. So first of all, we do have a social media campaign underway for the bond millage communication as well as ongoing ads that you will see in the ticker. Both of these mediums are being used for informational in context regarding the safe, warm, and dry features of the bond millage proposal. So you can look for those. Second of all, just more of an informational than anything, kindergarten has a new dental requirement. And so beginning this fall, all incoming kindergarten students must have a dental exam complete and on file with the system where we put in like the immunizations and everything through the state. So we are working with our community partners, the Grand Traverse County Health Department and then Northwest Michigan Health Services, and working collaboratively as a team to try to figure out how do we get dental checks done at all of our buildings to ensure that it is not something that all of these families will be surprised about and will try to make appointments and not be able to get an appointment in time.
Is the government going to pay for that too?
You know, that's a good question. Have a look that one up.
Yeah, so in addition to that, we've also tried to think ahead because of the fact that by doing a sudden surge of that many dental checks, you're also going to have a lot of follow-up care that's needed. And so we are currently even blocking time in October to finalize any checks that haven't been done and then blocking time beyond that to bring in dental mobile to our elementary buildings to provide some of the care that is needed or to provide them with a referral to an onsite location that can ensure that the child is seen and cared for with their dental needs. So we, once we have all those details finalized, we will share them out with the elementary buildings so that as they communicate with all of their new kindergarten families that they can share that information with them. And then finally, just wanted to share some happy news. The communications department was named a recipient for the National Public Relations Association Golden Achievement Award for the work surrounding our recent branding guidelines. And so the guidelines includes all of our fonts, logos, colors, email signatures, and provides print and online formats for letterhead, slides, forms, all that good stuff. The branding will be fully integrated for the start of the new school year. So we're just happy that with the exiting of a lot of the communications team over the last few months, that with that team that we did have, that we could kind of finish it off with, with a nice national achievement award.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
That's great. I have a question, I don't, this is probably not a Ginger question, but just on the bond communication update. If the social media, if it's posted on social media, are we as board members allowed to say, "Please vote August 6th"?
You, yes, and, and really, you know, as your own, on your own personal social media, you can do what you want.
Okay, so I could put, "Vote yes."
Well, I can't tell you that right here.
Okay, okay, okay.
What you couldn't do is say, "As a board member, I ask," or, "I am a board member and you should vote this." It's basically your personal.
So don't do that.
Versus.
Okay, got it.
As Erica, I suggest you do X.
Okay.
From my personal page.
Got it, okay. I just wanted to clarify as I'm, I've seen some of the social media pushes come through, and I want to be supportive, but I don't want to.
As, as a personal person and representing yourself as a, a personal individual, you can do what you want. At any point, you're representing yourself as a school board member or the district, you have to make sure it's informational only.
Gotcha, okay.
What about signs? Is there, is it only through the yes committee that you can get signs or?
The signs that you're seeing around town are through the yes committee. We do have some extra TCaps yard signs from last summer. I actually put them up on the wall over here so that, and then the stakes are on one of the shelves. If anybody wants just a sign that does not represent anything other than TCaps and that your willingness to share information about the district, we encourage everyone to take a sign.
I've got some yes signs if you want one.
Yeah, because I'm out now.
Okay.
Thank you.
I've got some more. I don't know how many they have, we were just talking about this.
Not sure, like I said, but that's something outside of this realm, you're more than welcome when you leave the building.
Right.
And out in the, in the road, you can talk about anything you want personally.
Got it, got it.
But if you're looking for an informational for TCaps thing, we've got some of those too.
Actually, may sell out my one.
Yeah, I've got those.
Yep, so, but if you know anybody else that would like a TCaps only one or about in Rome or whatever, feel free to take one. We've got enough, we're trying to get rid of them, so please feel free to also distribute those.
What about, I've got my office hours after this meeting, can I take?
Those ones right there, you can take all you want.
Take a few of those and, okay, I'll, I'll.
Remember there, you're representing yourself a board member, so the answer would be, would have to be informational only while you're there.
But when you went to your car.
After your hours are over and you're in the road, you are, you know, sort of IQ citizen.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. And I'm very happy, I mean, the kindergarten dental, I know it's a pain, but wow, from volunteering with Lunch Buddies, it's incredible.
Yeah.
How some of those kids have.
That is going to be a big one.
Serious dental disease as little guy, little, little people. So it's nice to be able to get them some education around it to probably begin with. And I'll leave it on that.
My only question coming back, oh, geez, sorry, let's close up, is there any other questions on communications? Then on other items, just one other question on the agenda. I know we obviously have the standard legislative update in the superintendent report. Do you want to break down it? Because I know for a fact we're going to get lots of questions about it.
Yeah, I will, I will give you one, you know.
And then break it down in that superintendent, you can still do it within there rather than.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it right there.
Okay.
Yep. And we don't even have the full analysis yet to really compare it, you know, from that point, but.
We tried to read the bill and it wasn't, it was one of the.
No, I've read the bill, I've read the, I haven't read the bill yet language, I've seen the Senate, House fiscal, you know, summaries of it and went through kind of line by line, you know, at 5:45 in the morning on my phone, passed out. So Wes is going to do a deep analysis of it though, as soon as we get, you know, categorical by categorical of where that lands, so. But I mean, there are some unique wins, the, like the isolated district that we get was a 6% increase, you know, which is just, you know, kind of strange. At risk was a large increase, special ed had a large increase, you know, but it's just the, the mental health and school safety one was depleted so bad that all those things, they just don't think make up, that was a million dollars alone for us.
Yeah.
You know, like, like that, that right there doesn't fully, you know, and do that. And what we were looking at for the foundation, you know, that's just barely does that. So with the categorical cuts that were done, it, it just doesn't balance it out, you know? And they were trying to really kind of say, "Oh, it does," and it really, you know, when we do the math, it doesn't, you know? You know, the transportation, the money is exactly the same, but they did come up with eight quartiles this time versus four, so we may get a little bit more in there than last time with it. So, but we might not know that one until, you know, like March, you know? So, so we'll see. But I will have as good of a breakdown as we can for you in that, that report.
Yeah, that's fine, I just wanted to, specifically the line item, just because. Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted it on the specifically the line item, just because I know I'm going to get, it's going to be a hot topic. So especially because I know thankfully, uh, we have a, a healthier fund balance than many.
But.
But it's going to take a beating, um, and some people don't have that.
Yeah, I mean, we're going to try and do a few strategic things if we can just stay in line with the budget we had, which was a $3 million spend. I was very much hoping, you know, that that was it. We came back with, okay, then extra million and a half or two and narrowed that down. That didn't happen. And so, you know, we're, we're going to make it, I think, okay, you know, this year, the, the hardest part of it's going to be now. You know, I know one elementary principal is very adamant on needing another teacher and saying so, but the numbers aren't quite there. And I thought if the budget was good, there's something we can do. You know, in splits at this point, there's no money to do anything with splits. And we've done that the last two years. And so there's going to be some of those kind of hard things that people are going to come that I've been able to address that are not possible under this situation this year.
This even, I know this district has done a really good job in terms of preparation for the, you know, the extra dollars going away. But for some of those districts that didn't, this is just another.
Oh, right. There's some of the articles today, yesterday and today.
We know there's going to be a lot of layoffs in some districts across the state.
We're starting to see in some of those critical shortage areas, the fallout of those districts who had not prepared for that or laying off social workers, other mental health workers that they can't afford to continue with. And so a year ago, we didn't have any social work candidates. And I think our current posting, we have 12 or 13 with M S Ws. And you start to wonder where does that come from? Well, it comes from, a lot of people are being displaced, um, from their position. So.
And it, and it just got worse.
Yeah. So. Yeah, I mean, there was already a couple of articles today of like dou- double digit percentage layoffs of staff in some districts. Because they've got to stay above the minimum fund balance and a lot of people weren't far above it.
And, you know, so we were smart. We're, we're going to be okay this year, but, but only with what we've done. You know, there's just, you know, you always come out of this hoping, can I just do that little bit more? Do I have enough to just do that little bit more? In the last couple of years, we've been fortunate to be able to do that a little bit more. And, and like I say, it, it's just, it's not there. We're, we're going to be lucky to try and do some preemptive and a few creative things that we can do to just keep within what our budget is that we had proposed.
Yeah. I mean, my biggest concern is just more the future years. I mean, we've got a couple of years that we're, because of planning, but you get a recession.
Right? Like if you really want to set a 10% item, you know, and, and now, and one, one thing that's unique in this is that, um, anybody that is employed since 2015, um, we, uh, uh, part of our retirement system, we pay in 3% of our salary into the insurance, um, re- retirement system. That was, is now removed. So anybody that was from 2015 just basically got a 3% raise. Um, from that standpoint. So it's unique that, you know, there's some, almost it's a compensation kind of thing that people will. But individually might be better off, but as the whole of the district, nah, you know? And so, uh, that's the part that, um, you know, is, uh, just really going to be hard for a lot of people. And there were winners. I mean, you know, the, the one piece of this to understand is that in section 147 C, which is the retirement, so they're buying that percentage down. I always talk about 21 cents of every dollar that we, we pay goes back to the state. So essentially this buys that down 5.75%. Okay. So we're looking at just almost 16% versus 21. So 21 cents now 16 cents we have to pay. But when you have districts that maybe don't have the inequities like transportation that we have downstate that pay more. Now they get a bigger savings because they pay their people in more because they have more money, because they're five square miles versus 300 square miles to do transportation and those kind of things. So there's this inequity of districts that have high payroll and low payroll. Well, the ones that have high payroll save more now and the ones that have less payroll save less. And so like, we heard some numbers from some small districts in the U P that it was, it was like a, a 5% cut. You know, this whole thing for some of them because they just, you know, the cost of living isn't expensive, but they, their transportation bills are huge. And so their compensation isn't quite as much. And so that's, there's, so there's this inequity of the winners and losers in, in 147 C. We've always known it's there. Two X has kind of helped eliminate that as, as we go. But you know, that was the part that I told Sarah Anthony, the, the Senate Appropriations Chair, three in the morning. And like, for, for almost 20 years, we've had a two X formula in Northern Michigan that we've been a proponent of that has finally gotten us to closer to a, and even to the rest of the state. This is the first time we, we, we'll have a zero since the 20, 2001 recession. At that point where we had, it got a bump, but then there was a cut, you know, and then got a little bit, even in bad times, we've gotten a little bit in the foundation. So to get zero is just like, I tried to say, I'm like, at least $25, at least something in it. Nope, can't do it.
One of the things I'm hearing in my state organizations, and this has been ongoing for a while, I mean, just getting them, people into central administration, whether it be superintendents or H R or business, you know, is really difficult to get pool of applicants for at the beginning. And now people are starting to say that are eligible for retirement, I'm too old for this stuff. Like I just don't want to do this anymore. So, you know, they're, they're leaving en masse and we're not getting people saying, hey, that, I think that's a challenge I want to take, take on. I mean, it's going to continue to be that way. And that's one of those unforeseen rollouts of when this stuff gets difficult. In my world, people like prohibited subjects are back, you know, we've got no money. I'm out. You know what I mean? They'll see you on the beach in Florida.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Right. So, so I, I do think we've put ourselves in the best position we possibly could have. Not knowing what this next, this be or bring would bring. And it just didn't quite turn out like we'd hoped. And so we'll, we'll figure it out.
A lot of people are going to be in a lot worse situations.
That is true. That is true. That is true.
Yep. All right. Um, any other, any other questions or items? All right. With that, the next board executive committee meeting is Thursday, August 1st, uh, at 4:00 PM in this room. Uh, and with that, uh, no objection, we adjourn the meeting. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
I was love, I did you live by this, this teacher, my teacher friends would say that June.